We're back on whenever you are all ready.
And we're back. And Stephanie, we understand, still has a minute left on her time. If she is present, there you are.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna go with where I think I got cut off.
Sounds good, Stephanie.
All right, cool. So currently, as a role as the Food Service Director, sugar, sweet and beverages continue to dominate the market and advertising. I see a lot of these things come into the building in the morning treated by parents as, as early as elementary school children. I have also heard from teachers that energy drinks and prime beverages are often the subject of trades and causing classroom disruptions. And then on the funding on school meals, so this is the first school year since March 2020 that public schools in our state have been completely removed, almost completely removed from government funding, free meals in some capacity. We've gone from free meals from all to intermittent free meal funding, to free breakfast for paid and reduced price students, to now only reduced price students qualifying for free breakfast and lunch. The loss of free school meals for all students increases behavioral disruptions, nurse visits, decreases student attendance. Free breakfast for all students showed that more students were coming to school on time and contributing more positively to the classroom environment. I understand that funding free-
Each three minutes in total, please summarize.
Yep, funding free meals for schools, whether just breakfast or lunch, is very costly to our state. But implementing the sugary beverage tax and using the revenue to fund school meal programs is a win-win for Connecticut Public School students. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you very much. Paul Palmer, one more shouted.
Can you hear me now?
Paul, we can hear you.
Great. All right. Thank you very much, Chairman and members of the committee for staying so late. I'll try to make it brief. I'm talking about HB 5544, a fee and tax on electric vehicles. I'm in opposition to that as it's presently written. I'm not in opposition to the tax part of the bill because it's replacement for the road taxes that are not collected because electric vehicles don't use gasoline. Now, the the fee is the part that I object to because in other states, they've imposed these fees and some of these fees are anywhere from $12 to $400 a year. And that's very punitive. And what it has a tendency to do is to squash sales of electric cars and plug-in electric hybrids, which is kind of counterproductive. Right now, in the state of Connecticut, the electric rates have gone up significantly, paying 34 cents per kilowatt hour. And I own a plug-in hybrid and because of the rate of electricity has gone up so high and the price of gasoline is down, it makes absolutely no sense to even use electricity. It would be the equivalent of buying gasoline at $5.60 a gallon. So, that being said, not using the plug-in feature, the state is planning on instilling a fee on me for having a plug-in hybrid, which means I'll be paying for absolutely nothing. And who knows what the fee's gonna be? That doesn't say in the bill what the fee will be. And that's kind of a large variable, you know, $20 to $400. Imagine your constituents get their renewal on their registration and it's 12.
Technical difficulties. We're gonna move on. Madam Clerk, Fiona Pearson. Brian O'Leary.
Good evening, Chairperson Horn, Fran Farah, and distinguished members of the Finance, Revenue and Bonding Committee. My name is Brian O'Leary. I'm Tax Counsel for the Motion Picture Association. Thank you for the opportunity to allow me to appear before you this evening to express the MPAs opposition to the tax provisions in Senate Bill 1246 that would reduce Connecticut's film, television and digital media tax credit program from a 30% credit on qualified expenses to a 25% credit on qualified expenses. As this committee is undertaking its deliberations for recommendations for the budget, I hope to just offer some context for this proposed change because Connecticut is at cross-currents with the policy of other jurisdictions, the states, the provinces and the countries that Connecticut has and will continue to compete with for the film and television and digital business that it has so successfully attracted. At the moment, there's 120 film incentive programs around the world oriented exclusively to attract film and television production activity. And the average, according to the Association of Film Commissioners International, the average percentage rate is 30. And that is the average. In addition to that, it is common that most jurisdictions will have some incremental increase for desired activities. Like New York, you earn an extra 10% if you shoot in certain parts of the state. And Connecticut, it is a flat 30%. In New Jersey, Illinois, you can go around the country and you can go across Canada and you see these incremental incentives. What Connecticut is right now is at the national and global average and the incentive itself, despite the fact that it doesn't offer incremental incentives above and beyond the 30%, has competed successfully and allowed this state to attract blue chip companies and startups. And the results have been measured, as many of you are probably aware, by the Alsberg SPI firm, and I know that Leon was supposed to testify, so I'm gonna try to fill in a few blanks on things that he would have said if he was able to participate. That report from three years ago looked at a 10-year span of Connecticut production activity and found that the state attracted $2.7 billion of production activity as a result of this incentive. And if you just spotlight 2020, the activity in Connecticut associated with film and television production created over 8,700 jobs, generated over 680 million of GBA, gross value added. What that essentially means, gross value added is that's pocket money, that is your earnings for Connecticut residents and its profits for Connecticut businesses. So $680 million of gross value added contributed to the state economy. Overall economic output was over $1 billion. That's just for one year. So this program has been a catalyst for success. And important, as you think about these potential changes, just under-
Three minutes, you've reached three minutes, please summarize.
Just understand that this program has gone through many changes over the years and that has allowed the program to be efficient and effective. We respectfully ask that no more changes are made to this program this year. Let the program continue to succeed on its current terms. Thank you for your time. I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Brian. Francis Lombard. Edward Soto. Rosanna Ferraro.
I'm here on Zoom.
Please proceed.
Good, very late evening, co-chairs, ranking members and members of the Finance, Revenue and Bonding Committee. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you all tonight. I'm here in support of HB 5986 and SB 740 on the state child tax credit and the revenue raising proposals of SB 741 and 742. I am Rosanna Ferraro. I'm the Policy Director at Universal Healthcare Foundation of Connecticut. Our mission is to accelerate the movement for health justice for everybody because health is a human right and core to social justice and equity. We are also here tonight as members of the Connecticut For All and Child Tax Credit Coalition. Health is more than healthcare. And health justice is more than access to quality, affordable care. Excuse me. When we say health justice, we mean true justice in all the areas of our lives that impact our health and well-being. In our work at Universal, we center those most impacted by injustice and health. Black and brown people, immigrants, LGBTQIA folks, people with disabilities and those with low incomes. We know that a social determinant of health is economic security. We are not going to achieve health for all of us in the state while the income inequality gap grows. Creating a refundable permanent child tax credit would improve the economic security of families with children. 2019 National Academy of Sciences report says programs like the refundable child tax credit are associated with improved health for children, families and communities now and in the long term. Excuse me. We also support raising revenue to invest in our communities that are most impacted by injustice. The tax that 741 would institute and 742 are the kinds of revenue raising proposals that tax those most able to afford it and moves us towards a state that fulfills its promise, not just for some, but for all of us. Our health is tied up in our economic security. We can achieve health justice when we address the many causes of the root. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Dr. James Carden. Mike Valet. Mike Valet.
I'm here.
Please proceed, sir.
You can hear me, right?
You can.
All right. Good evening, Chairman Funfarah, Chairman Horn, ranking members Fazio and Paletta, Vice Chairs Miller, Cabrera, Savat and Rader, and other honorable members of the Finance, Revenue and Bonding Committee. My name is Michael Valet. I am the Chief Financial Officer at Stanford Health, an independent nonprofit system serving lower Fairfield County. I am providing testimony in opposition to the provisions of Senate Bill 1246, specifically Sections 16 and 18, as they pertain to the hospital tax because they cannot be seen as a standalone proposal. When seen as a whole package, the administration has left substantial federal dollars on the table and has failed to invest in Medicaid payments to hospitals. I'm gonna abbreviate my testimony in the interest of time and also because Mr. Schaefer from the Connecticut Hospital Association had previously hit upon all of the points that I plan to also make here this evening. I would just underscore a couple of things. It was noted that the current Medicaid shortfall for all of the state's hospitals is about $1.4 billion. So we certainly participate in that shortfall, experience that shortfall. The proposals that are presently at hand essentially just exacerbate that Medicaid shortfall. Mr. Schaefer went through the dollars that would be added to the tax and the dollars that would be increased in supplemental payments. That really does nothing to change the overall equation there. And then to, when I say it's exacerbated, it's because we're also looking at no Medicaid rate increases going forward after state fiscal year 2026. So having said that, I just want to thank, express our appreciation of the work the legislature does every year to support hospitals and the patients they serve. I thank you for your time this evening. Applaud your stamina. I'm happy to answer any question.
Mr. Valet, your Senator, Senator Fazio has a question for you.
I just wanted to thank you for hanging in there and testifying this evening. Stanford Health does great work in lower Fairfield County, one of the the great independent hospitals we have in the entire Northeast. And I appreciate your testimony because it's, I think, shedding light on the fact that this hospital tax change is really probably properly viewed as a tax increase and it means we have to be wary of it. So thank you for your testimony, Mike.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you very much.
Senator Honig has his hand up.
Senator Honig has a question.
Hi, yeah, thank you for your testimony. You had mentioned that the state is leaving a lot of Medicaid reimbursement money on the table. Could you elaborate on that?
Sure. Thank you for that question. My understanding in coordination with the Connecticut Hospital Association, is there is room under the Medicare upper payment limit that would allow for actually increased supplemental payments to be made? That would also then realize additional federal matching funds. So the full benefit, the full measure of what is afforded under the upper payment limit has not been has not been tapped into. This is essentially the point made there.
Thank you very much for that answer and thanks for hanging around so late at night.
My pleasure.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Jody Gillan. Emmeline Franklin.
Hello, I'm here. Thank you very much. I apologize for not being in person. I've got a bit of a cold. I thought I'd save you all from that. Good evening, Senator Funfarah, Representative Horn and the esteemed members of the Finance, Revenue and Bonding Committee. I respectfully submit testimony today in strong support of Senate Bill 740 and House Bill 5962, which would establish a refundable tax credit against the personal income tax. My name is Emmy Franklin. I'm a lifelong Connecticut resident and a graduate student at the University of Connecticut School of Social Work. Connecticut is one of the only high cost of living states with a broad-based personal income tax that does not, excuse me, adjust for the number of children or childcare expenses. It's no secret that raising a child is very expensive, costing an average of $18,390 a year for a married, middle-income family in the Northeast. Raising a child is even more expensive for families that require full-time childcare as that alone costs between $12,630 and $19,180 a year in Connecticut. In short, it is incredibly expensive to raise children in Connecticut and the state offers no tax incentive for people like me to start a family here. Between 2021 and 2022, child poverty more than doubled in Connecticut from 3.8% in 2021, or about 27,000 children, to 11.1% in 2022, or about 82,000 children, and at an even higher rate for black and Hispanic children. According to the US Census Bureau's analysis, the historic increase is largely due to an expiration of the American Rescue Plan Act's expansion to two federal tax credits, the child tax credit and the child dependent care tax credit. There's a strong compelling evidence that establishing permanent, well-designed state child tax credit would reduce poverty, childhood poverty, reduce income and wealth inequality, and address racial and ethnic income and wealth gaps and help children and families thrive. And I included some of this evidence in my written testimony. A child tax credit is a smart economic investment. An analysis from Moody's Analytics estimated that for each child tax credit dollar residents earn, they return $1.38 to the economy. Policymakers should also consider the cost of not investing in children and families. Connecticut Voices for Children's reported that Connecticut's low economic growth has led to an unusual loss of billions of dollars, an annual loss of billions of dollars of tax revenue. Failing to invest in programs like the child tax credit has the potential to reduce the tax base as families flee to more affordable states. In conclusion, a refundable tax credit will make Connecticut attractive to families, address poverty and inequity, and support the state and local economy. Thank you very much for listening to my testimony and I'm happy to address any questions you might have.
Thank you very much, Ms. Franklin.
Thank you.
Megan Gorman.
Megan is online, but they have not accepted the panelist invite, so 184 is ready.
Laura Palumbo Johnson.
Hello, I believe I've accepted the panelist invite. This is Megan Gorman. Okay.
Okay.
Oh, hello. Hello, members of the esteemed and enduring committee. I am very happy to be here for the 12-hour mark. I thank you all for your time so far. I am speaking in regards to, well, first I'll introduce myself, apologies. My name is Megan Gorman. I'm the Development and Community Engagement Coordinator for CMHA, Community Mental Health Affiliates. We are a large behavioral health nonprofit that serves the communities of central Connecticut, but we serve at least one individual from every single municipality in the state of Connecticut. So in a way, any of your constituents could also be our clients. I'm here to speak regarding two bills, Senate Bill 1246, an act concerning revenue items, and Senate Bill 1247, an act authorizing adjusting bond funds of the state. As you've heard from many other individuals in the audience tonight, especially nonprofits, the funding climate for us has continued to disappear. It has continued to plateau and the funding that we have at times been able to depend on is shrinking and/or does not go as far as it did 10, 15, 20 years ago when these contracts were first put into place. I urge members of the committee to address the critical need for rightsizing and rightly funding the nonprofit programs and services that provide a bulk of support in this state to thousands upon thousands of individuals every year. In regards to SB 1247, an act authorizing adjusting bond funds of the state, this, this bill in particular neglects to include vital funding for grants and aid through the nonprofit grants program administered by OPM. My organization is one of the very fortunate ones that was able to benefit from the recent nonprofit grant program awards done earlier this year. It's important to note that while $35.5 million were awarded and sent out, over $100 million in requests were sent to the OPM nonprofit grant program. That is because while our funding for general services continues to not be enough to provide quality care, it's not enough to address staffing shortages, it's not enough to pay our licensed and educated and qualified staff a reasonable wage. It certainly doesn't allow us to invest in capital infrastructure. It doesn't allow us to improve our IT infrastructure, our finances, let alone build autonomy and financial independence as a nonprofit. My organization was able to purchase a property that we previously leased and we were able to provide over a dozen chronically ill older adults with safe, supportive housing that otherwise they would not be able to access. Owning this property and receiving funds to update it, modernize it and make it more efficient is going to save my organization upwards of $100,000 a year alone. And it speaks to the criticalness-
Three minutes, you've reached three minutes, please summarize.
Thank you. I was so excited for waiting all this time, but to summarize, please, please adjust the fiscal guardrails. Nonprofits cannot wait anymore for the funding that is rightfully owed them for their services. And certainly, please do not remove the few lifelines that we have through things like the nonprofit grant program. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura Palumbo Johnson.
Good evening, Representatives, Senators and members of the Finance, Revenue and Bonding Committee. My name is Laura Palumbo Johnson, co-owner of McGilla Entertainment. I respectfully offer this testimony in opposition to SB Number 1246, Reduction of Connecticut Film Tax Credit from 30% to 25%. McGilla is an independent unscripted TV production company producing content for networks like Discovery, TLC, Lifetime and HGTV and employing over 100 individuals and contractors annually. Our average annual payroll expenses range from 13 to 15 million. McGilla has been in the business for almost 15 years in New York City and last year, after having survived through the COVID pandemic and finally completing our exorbitant Manhattan lease, McGilla relocated to Stanford, Connecticut, solely due to the digital media tax credit and the positive reviews from fellow companies like ITV and Wheelhouse. In 2024, McGilla incurred $4.9 million in local expenditure and created new jobs in Stanford. By the end of 2025, that number will grow to an estimated $5.5 million. And the digital media tax credit is vital to McGilla's relocation and growth in the upcoming years. I personally drive daily from Long Island to work in Stanford because of the tax credit. If I'm lucky, maybe a cross-sound ferry to Glen Cove will be in my future. But regardless, my commute helps keep our company alive. My employees come from Brooklyn, Queens, Long Island, Nyack, White Plains, New Jersey, and in increasing numbers now right here in Connecticut. Currently in Stanford, as Senator Miller mentioned much earlier, I have witnessed a community of unscripted producers that is vibrant, thriving and growing rapidly over the past few years. We swap ideas, resources and freelancers. Our sector of the industry is truly alive here. A short five years ago, that community was all based in New York. A tax credit cut would surely shut that growth down and cause a chilling effect on companies considering relocating to Connecticut. McGilla will be forced to apply to other states' growing incentive programs like New Jersey, currently offering 35%. I implore you to consider companies like mine who overhauled their businesses to reinvent themselves in Connecticut to provide valuable jobs to industry talent. Our investment here has just begun, but tax credits are a critical solution to our new industry hurdles. For these reasons, I urge you to oppose SB Number 1246 as it will do irreparable damage to my company, McGilla, the media industry and the vendors and employees it supports in the state of Connecticut. Thank you sincerely for your consideration.
Thank you. Raina Ranja Albosani. Elizabeth Landau. Representative D'Amico. Latasha Dion.
Yes, I'm here.
Great.
All right, I'll get started. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony today. My name is Latasha Dion and I am an occupational therapy educator, practitioner and advocate. I'm also a proud member and representative of the Connecticut Occupational Therapy Association, which I'll refer to as CONODA. We represent over 4,500 occupational therapists, occupational therapy assistants and future practitioners in our state. We are urging you to support Senate Bill 1246, Sections 39 through 40, which proposes removing licensing fees for both occupational therapists and occupational therapy assistants in Connecticut. While licensing fees are typically seen as a professional responsibility, eliminating this fee could pose a unique opportunity for OTs in Connecticut. It's essential that lawmakers explicitly consider occupational therapy assistance as well within the bill's provisions, just to ensure that they're not left behind. Currently, despite significant pay differences between OTs and OT assistants, we both pay the same for licensing fees, which creates an unfair financial burden on our OT assistants. As an educator, I hear firsthand from students in class worried and stressed about entering the profession with all of the fees that they have to think about. Some of those fees being registering themselves through our national certification board, the licensing fees, any fees associated with continuing education. So these are things that they're sitting in the classroom worried about before even getting into the field. And then, of course, we hear this from our practitioners that are practicing now. Keeping up with the fees is a difficult thing to do, especially juggling other types of fees that we, we do to ensure our licensure and our registration. The OT profession is deeply committed to increasing diversity. A diverse workforce is crucial for providing culturally competent care. We know with cultural humility, we improve health outcomes, we decrease disparities. However, licensure fees disproportionately impact underrepresented groups, making it more difficult for diverse individuals to enter and sustain a career. making it more difficult for diverse individuals to enter and sustain a career in occupational therapy. Additionally, CONODA is advocating for other critical changes such as modernizing our scope of practice. It's out of date. The last time, or the first time it's ever, you know, was introduced was in the 70s, so it's really out of date. We also are looking to address low insurance reimbursement rates, improving our workload demands for our school occupational therapists, and really advocating to be seen as qualified mental health providers. So that's just a few other things that we're looking to achieve. To summarize, passing Senate Bill 1246 and addressing these challenges can really put us in the right position to continue all the great things that we're doing. Thank you so much for your time. I know it's late. If you have any questions, I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dion. Senator Ozio?
Thank you, Ms. Dion, for your testimony. Please keep speaking out on this issue. It's been, now it's the third year that we've been advocating for a cut to these occupational licensing fees for workers in our state. We should be welcoming people to come work here, to continue working here, especially when there's skilled professionals, middle-income professionals. And so your testimony in favor of this provision of the budget is much appreciated. I know there's other bills going through the General Assembly that have gotten a lot of people testifying for them. So it looks like we're moving forward in the right direction. Hopefully, this is the year we get it done. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Michael Bergen?
Good evening, esteemed and dedicated members of the committee. It has been inspiring for the last 12 hours to hear questions from my fellow Connecticut residents, as well as the thoughtful questions that you've posed them. My name is Michael Bergen, and I serve as the Chief Financial and Operating Officer of Miss Porter School in Farmington. I've held this role since 2008, and my wife and I raised our two children in campus housing. I appreciate the opportunity to speak today in strong opposition to House Bill 6804. Miss Porter School was founded in 1843 by Sarah Porter, a pioneering educator who believed in the radical notion that girls deserve access to a world-class education. More than 180 years later, we remain committed to that mission. We are an independent nonprofit boarding and day school for girls, accredited by the New England Association of Schools and Colleges in grades nine through 12. Our enrollment includes 335 students from 24 states and 16 countries, with 166 students calling Connecticut home. If those students from Connecticut were to be educated in the public school system, it would cost the state $4.15 million. We have an operating budget of $28 million, and we employ 135 full-time staff, most of whom live in Farmington and surrounding towns. Our financial resources are dedicated to fulfilling our educational mission as a nonprofit institution. Property tax exemption exists for nonprofits because institutions like ours do not operate to generate a profit. Rather, we operate to fulfill our ambitious mission. Campus housing is not a revenue source. It is a necessary and significant investment required to sustain our boarding school model. Approximately 80% of our faculty and all of our senior staff live in campus housing as a condition of employment, ensuring 24/7 care and supervision for our students. Our faculty and staff are responsible for students every hour of the day. We manage academic programs, athletics, and co-curricular activities while overseeing dormitories, responding to emergencies, shop-owning events, and providing transportation to medical appointments. Living on campus is not a convenience. It is a fundamental requirement to ensure student safety and the essential component of our educational model. If we were required to pay property taxes on our on-campus housing, there would be severe financial consequences. We would have to make difficult decisions around our ability to attract and retain top talent, potentially reduce investments in our campus housing and maintenance, and potentially decrease student aid. Such a financial burden would directly undermine our ability to fulfill our nonprofit mission. Miss Porter School has been an engaged and contributing member of the Farmington community since 1843. We generate significant economic benefits for the town and the state, attracting thousands of visitors annually, prospective families, alumni, and educators who support local and regional businesses. Our summer programs bring hundreds of additional prospective families and professionals to Farmington, further bolstering the regional economy. We have a longstanding partnership with the Farmington Fire Department, supporting their fundraising efforts and providing our facilities for training. Several members of our staff volunteer as emergency responders, and we allow them to leave work for call without clocking out.
You've reached three minutes, you've reached three minutes, please summarize.
In conclusion, campus housing is indispensable to the operation of Miss Porter School and integral to our nonprofit mission. House Bill 6804 threatens our ability to maintain the necessary residential infrastructure that ensures student safety and the continued success of our institution. For these reasons, I strongly urge the committee to oppose the bill, and I thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Bergen. Stephanie Platterotti? Could you press the button in front of you there?
To hold it? There we go. Hi. Good evening, Senator Fonfora, Representative Horn, and honorable members of the Finance, Revenue, and Bonding Committee. My name is Stephanie Platterotti, and I'm from Hebron. I am a social worker at Davis Place, a nursing home located in Danielson. I'm here today to urge you to support Senate Bill 742, Senate Bill 740, and HB 5986. Funding requires revenue, and this funding is essential to keeping many important departments in our state operating in the manner in which they were intended to. SB 742 garnishes it in a way that doesn't damage the backs of the hard-working lower and middle-class residents in our state. I have been at Davis Place for eight months, and in that short time, I can tell you one thing for certain: The system is broken. These programs depend on one another, and they are completely disjointed, both within the facility and within the healthcare system at large. From Medicaid eligibility, where people are forced to sell the assets it took them a lifetime to earn, to have the 24-hour care that they so desperately need, to those who are fortunate enough to mend beyond the need for 24-hour care, yet they struggle to find the home care necessary for them to continue to thrive at their home within the community. The lack of resources across the healthcare field has to be addressed to deal with the issues you've heard about today. We cannot just address the issues in nursing homes and not ensure that the group homes don't have the support that they need, or that PCAs and home health aides don't have the wages that they can live on. The issues don't stop when patient care moves from one sector to another. They continue to follow them. This impacts the quality of care both inside and outside of the facility. The number of readmissions we receive is discouraging, whether it be because the patient had to wait months to see a specialist and their condition worsened in that time, or because the appointment with their primary care physician to establish home care was canceled by their provider, or because home care staffing is spread so thin that there are not enough people in the workforce to address all of the need. We cannot continue to allow the cycle to perpetuate. One step to begin to address the issue lies in education. Healthcare workers need to have the opportunity to continue to improve their skills and fill the gaps in an aging workforce. This becomes impossible when you are working 16 hours a day or two full-time jobs while also trying to raise a family. In order to make education more attainable for home healthcare workers, you need to address their wages and make it so they don't need to spend so much time working. There are no more hours in a day to give. It is not feasible, realistic, or affordable. We need the state to address the growing cost of living here, and that starts by making it so your workers, state-funded employees, can afford to live here. To fix the system, we need investment, which means we need revenue. However, it's not enough to simply bring the money because the fiscal roadblocks stop us from spending it. We must modify the fiscal roadblocks so we can raise revenue and provide increased funding to all of the healthcare agencies, from the Department of Aging and Disability Services to the Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services, and everyone in between. We must stop the bleeding, and the only way to do that is to change how we are doing things. We can't fix one department any longer. It's a band-aid that will not hold. Please support Senate Bill 742. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. John Starkley?
Hello, honorable members of the Finance, Revenue, and Bonding Committee. My name is Jonathan Stakely, and I'm a personal care assistant from Gales Ferry. And I'm here today to strongly urge you to support Senate Bill 742, Senate Bill 740, and House Bill 5986. These bills are necessary not to only help families, but raise revenue needed to fund agencies like the Department of Social Services, which fund home care providers like myself. I'm a PCA, and I wasn't always a PCA. I ended up becoming a PCA for my brother, and the reason for that is the previous caregiver beforehand was, had to leave because she was preparing for her own family. And in home care, you know, there's things like there's no health insurance and basic living wages to sustain that. So, you know, I couldn't even be upset with her for having to move on, even though we dearly loved her as family. And unfortunately, the field of caregivers is an endless cycle of workers coming and going. Unless you're directly caring for a loved one like myself, there's not much tying you to this job. We have low wages, and many of us struggle to pay our bills because benefits are minimal and expensive. Even for those of us that care for loved ones like myself, it's difficult to stay in the field when we know we can be making significantly more money outside of the household. But that always has me worry about what would happen to my brother if I were to leave like the other caregiver left. This is always something that weighs on our hearts and in our heads. To address the issues in my field, we need investments. Unfortunately, Connecticut's fiscal roadblocks and regressive tax structure has prevented that investment from happening. And we need to pass policies like the capital gains tax and child tax credit to finally start to balance the budget on the backs of billionaire shoulders instead of the backs of workers like me. In addition to raising revenue from the ultra-rich, we also need to modify the fiscal roadblocks so we can actually spend the money on important things like home care. So again, please do the right thing for families and workers by passing Senate Bill 742, Senate Bill 740, and House Bill 5986. Billionaires can afford to pay this tax while families and workers can't afford to wait much longer for relief. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Heading for the homestretch here, folks. Don Kihara?
Good evening, Chairman Fonfera, Chairwoman Horn, and esteemed members of the Finance, Revenue, and Bonding Committee. My name is Don Kihara, and I strongly oppose SB Number 1246 in regards to the film tax credit. The only reason any state offers the film tax credit is to incentivize production companies to bring their projects, and more importantly, their money, to that respective state, which means all of the states that offer a tax credit mutually agree and understand the economic value of having productions in their state. Most of these states have raised their film tax credit over the past 10 years because they also mutually agree and understand that the higher the tax credit, the more productions come to their state. By that logic alone, cutting this credit would make Connecticut less competitive compared to neighboring states, resulting in fewer productions, leading to less spending, fewer jobs, and a drop in tax revenue generated from those industries connected to film production. In the long term, Connecticut could lose out on significant economic opportunities. As a casting agency and production service business owner, we help a lot of actors, crew workers, and businesses in Connecticut get a lot of work in the film industry. Working closely with that many people in one industry, you get a firsthand look at the issues they deal with. Listening to our people's concerns on this matter, I can personally attest to the negative effect this reduction would have on our local workforce, independent contractors, actors, crew members who depend on the film industry for their livelihood. Cutting the tax credit would reduce the number of jobs available. This could stunt the growth of Connecticut's creative economy and diminish the opportunities for local professionals. In conclusion, I strongly urge you to oppose the reduction of the film tax credit. It is a vital tool for supporting our local economy, creating jobs, and maintaining Connecticut's position as a competitive filming location. Reducing the credit will only harm our workforce and economic prospects. Thank you for considering my concerns, and I'm happy to address any questions.
Thank you. And unless something else happens between now and I finish this sentence, this could be our last witness. Catherine Vieda? Catherine?
Hi. Good evening, everybody. Good evening, Senator Fonfora, Representative Horn, and members of the Finance, Revenue, and Bonding Committee. My name is Catherine Vieda, and I'm the new Coalition Director for the Husky for Immigrants Coalition, a statewide coalition comprised of over 40 organizations dedicated to ensuring equitable access to health care for all Connecticut residents, irrespective of their background or immigration status. Husky for Immigrants is also a member of the Connecticut for All Coalition, and we're here this evening testifying in support of SB 740, SB 741, SB 742, and HB 5986. The Husky for Immigrants Coalition recognizes that in order to achieve health equity, we must also advance efforts to achieve economic equity. Connecticut is one of the wealthiest states in the US, yet it constantly reigns among the states with the widest income inequality. Currently, Connecticut's top 1% of taxpayers earn on average 180 times more than what the bottom 10% earn, and the disparities are even worse among households of color. Connecticut is also the only state in New England and the only high-cost-of-living state that does not address its income tax based on household size. And these economic inequities are often reflected in health outcomes. For example, a baby born in Bridgeport, where I'm from, will have a life expectancy nearly eight years shorter compared to a baby born in a more affluent town like Westport, just 10 miles away. The child tax credit effectiveness is directly, directly addresses childhood poverty and was most recently evident and felt nationwide when ARPA temporarily expanded the tax credit in 2021. We saw childhood poverty significantly decrease in the state of Connecticut during that time and significantly increase as soon as the expanded tax credit was eliminated at the federal level. And furthermore, we also want to highlight that an expansive definition of family will also align with Connecticut's paid family and medical leave policy, which is one of the most inclusive definitions of family in the nation. The expansive definition is critically important to immigrant families who often depend on multi-generational households, which can consist of immediate or extended family members to meet familial needs. And additionally, we respectfully recommend to add language to SB 740 and HB 5986 to utilize a similar application as the one implemented in support of the 2022 child tax rebate as a tool to provide an easy pathway for these Connecticut households with children with residency status but with parents who may not have the means to file their taxes. We understand that continuous and robust funding for, for, like, the child tax credit and Husky coverage for all income-eligible residents regardless of their immigration status requires additional resources. And for these reasons, we also support bills like SB 471-
You've reached three minutes, please summarize.
Yep. So, and SB 472 to ensure that the state can bring in additional revenue that can be utilized to not only bring in more revenue into the state but to fund critical resources and put Connecticut back on track to achieve the record-low levels of childhood poverty that we saw in 2021. So I think the committee for the opportunity to testify, I do hope I'm the last person you all will be hearing from tonight so that you can all get home and have a restful evening.
Thank you, Catherine. I believe we have, okay, we got the right signal. Couple of observations. One is, I've concluded that, Madam Chair, that the motion picture, the film tax credit people are homeless, which is why they have stayed here throughout this-
The housing crisis in this country.
There weren't any movies made in Connecticut.
And-
In between jobs.
And it's cold outside, but thank the staff, Sam and Ash in particular, for all the help you gave us tonight. And for Pete, who gave me water about four hours ago. Michael Murphy, I don't know what's wrong with you, but God bless you. And for the, and for all of the crazies up here who have endured this evening and night and morning pretty soon. Thank you all very much. Dooley noted. Thank you, Madam Chair.